Good evening, everybody. This is the budget meeting for tonight. I sent you all the budget, all the supporting documents. What we're thinking for tonight would be a self walk through.
Our, the budget message just kind of hit the highlights. And then Ms. Williams, our finance officer, has created a presentation based on a lot of the questions that we've heard throughout the process. For example, I know Councilmember Ayers, you had asked about some trend data. The mayor and I, mayor and I talked about getting some information about the impact on members of the public residents. And Ms. Williams has created a presentation. And then from there, creating a, just having a basically a Q and A session. So any items that the board members like to ask about, would like to talk through, kind of talk through that. So how does that sound? Does that sound good? Okay, great.
Yeah.
So first thing, the budget, as you all know, it's an increase of about nine percent to last year's adopted budget, or at least this year's adopted budget. But if you look at it, our, this year's adopted budget, based on all the amendments, it's actually a decrease of about one percent. So obviously, we've created the budget using a variety of strategies, both from a management perspective and also using your guidance, your priorities and the directives we got at our budget meetings. So as we get into this, the board over the years has gotten frustrated, I think, historically in local governments. We would look at the budget one year at a time. And what we heard from our board was that we feel like we're really missing the opportunity to really take our financial planning to the next level. And we don't want to look at our books with blinders on, just on a year to year basis. How does that look over the course of several years? And that's how we should be making decisions. So because of that, the board has opted to do some more longer range financial planning. And thanks to those efforts, we've long known that the budget we're creating this year, fiscal year 26, like the fiscal year 25 budget that we created last year, would be a challenging one. It would be a challenging one for six factors. We've listed them here. The first is persistent inflation over several years. Certainly, inflation has come down from its peaks in 2022, but those costs are still there, right? And there's still stuff that have been hard for us to stomach. It's everything from asphalt to office supplies to police vehicles, everything in between. We've all seen it. The second item is rising personnel costs, especially with that largest chunk of police. So much of what we do service wise is labor intensive. And that particular aspect of our costs have increased. The third thing is we've seen an increased service demand. The public has requested the town to do a number of enhanced services, and the council has responded. So think about increasing road maintenance so the roads aren't deteriorating faster than they can be repaired, adding a full school resource officer after the Uvalde school shooting tragedy. Investing in Greenway and parks in a multitude of ways, improving those amenities, improving roadside aesthetics with cutting and a number of other ways. The fourth is just a number of council ed initiatives. The fifth, and this is a big one, is the loss of ARPA funds. So if you look back to fiscal year 24, that was the last year we had a full year of full ARPA funds, amounted to about 20% of our budget. So pulling that out, that amount of revenue from a budget, it's really a big budget gap to make up 20%. Now, it's a very, very small comfort that we are not in this alone. This is a challenge that, yes, local governments are facing all over the country with the end of the COVID funds, but it's not just local governments. It's hospitals, it's school systems, it's nonprofits, and a number of contractors that relied on the government as well. So this is something that you'll see, if you pay attention to the news and hear about it, you'll see it across a number of different kinds of organizations. And finally, one that is also worth mentioning is the town, about seventy five, seventy, excuse me, 70% of our budget is relatively fixed. And what we mean by fixed is that it's either largely the cost are outside of our control. It's either fixed by contract, or it's fixed by market forces. So what are those three things that make up? Well, the first is our solid waste collection contract, trash recycling, leaf limb pickup, things like that. So the natural question might be was, well, can we bid it out and get a lower cost? Well, good news, bad news. The bad news is, we think it's unlikely that if we bid it out now, we would get a lower cost. If anything, I would be concerned about us potentially getting a higher cost. And the reason why is, the council over the past several years, really going back seven or eight years, has been very aggressive with negotiating with our trash provider and trying to get the lowest cost possible. And that contract is set to increase based on CPI, which is a common method when it comes to trash collection. The second large fixed cost is street maintenance. You know, we bid that out. That's largely based on our market forces, right? What do the contractors charge? We bid it out to try to get the lowest responsive bid, but beyond that, it's a lot outside of our control. We are trying to lower those costs with street maintenance by taking a lot of more proactive approaches, doing things like crack sealing, micro-surfacing, things like that. The idea is, just like with cars, it's cheaper to change the oil than to buy a new engine. Same thing with roads. Eventually, you'll have to buy a new engine, right? Eventually, you'll have to reconstruct the road. But if you do a number of proactive maintenance measures along the way, it's much cheaper than replacing the engine. And then finally, the third fixed cost is labor cost, and especially for police officers, which make up the bulk of what we do from a labor perspective. Now, how is this a fixed cost? Can't we say what we pay people? Yes, of course we can. But the problem is, if we say we're going to pay a police officer $15,000 a year, we're not going to be able to hire anybody, right? And of course, if we say we'll pay a police officer $1.5 million a year, we would get all the applications in the world, right? But it would become unsustainable. So the question is, how do you determine the right amount to pay our staff, right? Because we want to pay enough to be competitive, to provide a good work environment, but we don't want to pay too much, we don't want to pay too little, because if you do that, it causes challenges. And so what we do is, we do pay studies every so often to make sure we're paying our staff the right amount. And then from my role, what I try to do is try to create a positive work environment for our staff, right? Because it's about the money, but there are other things that matter too. So those are the six things that have really kind of put the town in a vice with the budget. And really, it's positioned the town to the ultimate question that we're seeing. And that's the same question as last year. Should we raise taxes, or should we cut services? Right? That's the question before the board. And the board, I heard you talk about it in public meetings, I heard you grapple with it in our one-on-one conversations. On one hand, the rising costs of providing services, right? It's a reality. Also, the time, at the same time, the potential burden on the taxpayers. Both those are two competing truths, right? And I've really watched y'all kind of grapple with the best way to handle that. So on the cutting services side, you know, to really move the needle, because again, we've lost 20% of our revenues from ARPA, we've got all these other competing pressures that we just went over. If you looked at cutting services, it would be really painful. It's things that are just main costs, you could do it. Some of them, maybe you could do, some of them you might not maybe be able to do and have it really make sense. For example, cutting trash collection frequency, cutting recycling, right? Do you eliminate recycling? Do you just go to picking up trash once every other week? It's not going to change the amount of trash that people have, right? They don't go out and buy things just so they can recycle them. It's just they buy the things and they either recycle it, or they throw it away. Finally, you could look at reducing police shift coverage. The challenge with that is obviously, the board commissioned a study with police at the town. We needed to add staff on the police side of things to keep up with the growth the town has seen over the past few years. You could look at parks, you could shut down events, you could close parks, you could defer road maintenance. Again, that's one of those ones that you could do it, you could decrease the amount in this year's budget, but really, it, you wouldn't escape the cost. You would escape the cost short term, but you would push the cost and add a larger amount, as the roads got worse, it would cost more to fix them, into the future. So a lot of, that's unpopular, right? All that is really challenging. We don't like the sound of that. And at the same time, we need to be, and the board is very sensitive to the burden that it places on residents, right? How does it affect them? And so that's something, as we looked at this, we are going to talk about a lot throughout this process, and have already talked about. So ultimately, the board asked staff to create a budget using what I'll call a balanced approach, not meaning not all one of things. So first, the goal was to kind of maintain our core services, the things that our residents rely on. Also, the board adopted a new fund balance policy to where we could tap into our fund balance. The town has been very conservative and really prudent managing its money, and has a really healthy fund balance that we can tap into under this policy and use it for kind of one-time capital expenditures, things like that. Also, the board asked us to make a budget that would decrease the property tax rate by two cents, but would increase it, a four cent increase over the revenue neutral rate. And so for the average homeowner, that would amount to about $20.64 a month. Again, that's on average. And we can dig into that cost a little bit more when Ms. Williams brings up her presentation. Also, the board said, hey, we really need to figure out a way to sustain our road maintenance. We looked around, and a number of other jurisdictions do a motor vehicle tax that's paid when people pay their tag and tax fee annually, and asked us to put on a $25 motor vehicle tax to support street maintenance. So obviously, the impact per month, that depends on the number of vehicles you have, but it's about $3 a car. So if you lived in the average amount, average home, and had two cars, for example, the additional impact would be roughly $26, $27 a month.
So wait a minute, explain that to me again?
Yep.
I mean, like the $25 per vehicle?
Yep.
That's annually?
That's annual, yeah. So it'd be about, about two bucks. So I was rounding up a little bit there, about two bucks per vehicle. So if you had one vehicle, it would, you'd be at about $23 a month, an extra additional cost. If you had two vehicles, it'd be about $25 a month, an extra cost. So obviously, as we look at that, the five-year forecast, I was initially hoping I could actually come in with a lower amount than what the board gave me, but after looking at the five-year forecasts, I didn't feel comfortable professionally recommending that to you. I wish I could, but when we look at the forecast, it seems like the need is there. So there will be some additional needs in the future. And kind of switching over to the Stormwater Fund, this is perhaps a more upbeat message, right? Good news, right? The town has been working on our Stormwater Fund for years, both on the revenue side and also in trying to get more efficient on the expenditure side. And we're not recommending an increase on the Stormwater Fund. And this is largely due to the success of the pilot period we had, growing our in-house capabilities with Stormwater. We were spending a lot of money contracting all this work out. And if we can continue, which this budget does, to improve our in-house and enhance our in-house capabilities, then we should be able to continue to deliver cost-effective services into the future. So that concludes the budget message, at least the initial ones, before I turn it over to Ms. Williams, and I can bring it up here to you, Jesse, if you prefer. But we're going to kind of go through in the details, but again, even though it's finished, a lot of work has been done. I first and foremost want to thank the board. Thank you for showing up. This is my job. This isn't the job that pays the bills for you all. This is part-time volunteer work, for the most part. I know you get paid, but you're here not as a job because you want to serve the community, so thank you for that. Also, I want to take this, the staff, you spent a lot of time, you spent a lot of work on this. Thank you. Thank you to Kurt, Aaron, Jesse, especially to you all. Thank you. Thank you to everybody for getting it this far, so.
Well, appreciate your hard work on it.
Yeah.
Thank you, team.
I know Jesse's probably going to answer this question, but the $25 per car, how much does that roughly generate?
A hundred and seventy.
So about a penny and a half?
A penny is about $3.67.
Almost a penny.
Almost a penny.
It's comparable in some ways, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's about a penny?
So depending on the amount of the value, it could in some ways be cheaper to do the vehicle fee versus to do the penny. Just depends on property values, how many cars you have, things like that.
Go.
Copy of this. This is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. This is just kind of going to be some high-level information. So this just shows you the breakout of the revenues that we have in the proposed budget that was sent out to y'all. So as you can see, it's predominantly from tax revenues. And then this is our expenditures by department.
What is the, sorry, what is the utility tax?
That's where we get, the state does, used to be called like franchise fees, but there's video programming, pipe, natural gas, electricity, and oh goodness, my brain just went blank. There's one more. But that's what those are. And then expenditures by department. So of course, you know, not unexpected, police makes up the biggest department here. You know, their expenditures alone are more than double any of the other departments. But to be expected, they have the most employees and do a lot. And then this just shows expenditures, you know, same total, this is just by category instead now. And also, to be expected, personnel costs make up the vast majority of our budget with 47%. So almost half of our budget is just personnel costs. This one, I don't have, you know, breakouts on here of percentages or anything, I can get that if you need it or want it. But this just shows you, because we heard you asking for more historical data, so this just shows you kind of a breakdown of what those revenues were made up. So you can see, it's kind of fluctuated in '23 and '24, when we had a lot of ARPA money. You see that the tax money was making up less than 40% of our revenues. But now, the tax money in this '26 proposed budget is going up to 62% of our revenues. And actually, that's the first time in all of this history that it's been over 60%. So we're now relying on tax dollars much more heavily than we have in the past.
So what are, what was the big green blobs in the middle there?
The bright green?
Bright green, yep.
That's restricted or non-recurring or grant revenues. So those are kind of one-time funds sometimes, in some cases.
So those were like P3, things like that there? The funds we got from the state there?
Yes, if the funds we got from the state would be in there, yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. And so now, you know, like we've been talking about with the ARPA money, this shows you, I just combined the taxes, ARPA, and fund balance, since we did adopt a '25 budget with an appropriation of $460,000 in fund balance. And the '26 proposed budget also includes a fund balance appropriation. I think it's $388,000 in unrestricted and then $40,000 in restricted funds. But this just shows you that change. You know, historically, prior to '22, we weren't, you know, we didn't have ARPA funds, so those weren't on there. And this also notates the years that we had revales as well, just for the last couple revale cycles. And so again, this just reiterates that this is the first, '26 is the first year that we're expecting the general fund budget to predominantly be made up by over 60% in tax funds. And this is the same chart that you saw a minute ago. This just shows the breakout of expenditures. So as you would expect, you know, personnel costs are going up and make up the majority of our budget. And so then ultimately, where do the tax dollars go? So as you can see from this chart, going back to fiscal year 17, our taxes basically could cover personnel and solid waste. But once we got to '24, those costs started going up, and so now, and the tax dollars, you know, started going down a little bit, well, not really down, but staying kind of flat. So now, our tax dollars are no longer enough to cover personnel, solid waste, and that's just the town-funded portion of streets. That's not Powell Bill funds, because those are restricted solely for that purpose. So this is just showing you that the tax dollars are no longer enough to cover those three categories. And this is just, again, historical data showing you the unassigned fund balance. So as you see, our fund balance has been increasing, but that's really the point of this one, is that the fund balance has been increasing. So we do have funding to do some of these projects that we were talking about with the budget, trying to appropriate that fund balance money, because we do have a healthy fund balance. This also shows you the change in that unrestricted fund balance. And you'll see in '23, there was a big jump, but that's because we had over $2 million, $2 million, almost $2.1 million transferred from ARPA funds. And once that transfer took place, those funds were then considered unrestricted.
So for this year, even though we expected to cover a gap, this year, we're, am I reading that right, that we're expected to still put about $300,000?
This is just historical. This is not.
Oh, so this is?
This is actual, real historical data. There's no estimates in here. So fiscal year '25 is not in here. This is actual real data.
And that's the year that we're in now?
Right. But we haven't closed out the year, so we don't know what fund balance is actually going to be in current year. We won't know that until the audit has been completed.
Okay.
And we can do an estimate, but this was just actual data.
But in '24, we did end up not actually spending into fund balance. We still added some.
We added 330, almost $339,000. Yes, sir.
In that year, keep me honest, we had, the budget that we adopted, we were going to, weren't we going to use like a million dollars, 700,000 or?
I honestly don't know off the top of my head what '24 adopted, but, well, it's right there. Actually, '24 is the only year that we have not appropriated unrestricted fund balance with the adopted budget, because that's in this gray category, gray line down at the bottom. So that's actually the only year we've net, we've not appropriated fund balance with the adopted budget.
Okay.
But to a point, though, that $339,000 that we added to fund balance, keep in mind that we transferred $2.6 million from ARPA. So, and then this, just as manager said, we heard y'all, that 57% was the average, not what everyone saw with their revales. So these next few slides, I'm not going to go over them in detail, but all they are is, the first one uses that 57% average that the county told us was our average increase. Just took the basic 100, 200, 300, all the way up to $700,000 with before revow. And so this shows you what their tax amount was before the revow, what the monthly amount was, and then it shows you what those same amounts are after the revow at 57%. And the increase, the annual increase and the monthly increase, and I did 40, 50, 60, and 70% options.
I'm sorry, is this assuming the tax rate stays the same?
No, this is assuming the 19.6 cents that we have put in the proposed budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But this is only town taxes. It's not, I mean, you know, we don't know what the county's doing at this point, so it's just factoring in our taxes. And that, that's all that I had in this.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Any questions?
Okay.
Sorry, I've been asking a long while.
That's all right. I'm sure we'll have some as we start discussing among ourselves, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Jesse.
Mm-hmm.
All righty. Yeah, I was talking to Alex, you know, you know, we've done this a variety of ways, how we do this. One session we got it, we've heard from all the departments, but I sent y'all a list of my concerns, my issues I wanted to talk about. I know y'all have some, so. I'll, we'll start over here, Graham. You got any questions on the line item budget that you wanted to discuss?
Uh.
Or if you want to point to somebody else?
It would be helpful if you brought up maybe the notable items list.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things I'll note, it wasn't in the notable items list, but I forged you an email from the county. Councilmember Ayers, you brought this up regarding wheels on wheels?
Yep.
Funding, so I sent y'all that information. If that's something y'all want to look at, we could add there, add it on here, but it's not on here. I just wanted to mention that, because you brought it up.
Yep.
Well, what's going on? Oh. I'll be right back.
I actually, I do have some questions.
Okay.
Just this proposed budget. So Powell Bill, the funding for that, how much has that been going up, if at all? Is it on here?
Not, because the net impact to the budget for Powell Bill funds is zero, because those are restricted funds, so that the revenue coming in from Powell Bill always matches the expenditures. And to be honest, we are conservative in what we budget for that revenue. But again, because it nets to zero, if we receive more than the budget, we can just come to account.
That's, we're using those funds for road maintenance rates.
Statutorily, those funds can only be used for They, statutorily, those funds can only be used for certain things.
Roads and sidewalks.
When was the last time the power bill rate has gone up to match, you know, inflation?
Big question, David, I, I don't know, we could look into that, uh-
I thought they were looking to actually reduce the power bill this year. And reduce it, like, as part of a, they'll reduce it this year and then reduce it next year. I think Spectrum had some type of article saying they were gonna reduce it by 50 million in the budget?
I don't know.
And it's based on SLEEN, right?
Just to answer your question, so the, the Powell bill allocations we received, so fiscal year 22, we received 446,000. 23, fiscal year 23, we received 451,000. Fiscal year 24, we received, uh, 506,000. And then it looks like fiscal year 25, uh, we've received 561,000.
Alright. Steven, you got, are you ready, or you want to?
On the KIP, there's two line items that, one of them is called general fund operational KIP and general fund enhanced KIP. And some of them are, one of them's green, one of them's hot. Am I to take it that everything in here is in the budget and paid for with this budget? That's on this sheet, or is this, some of them are not included?
You're talking from the line item?
Right.
Yeah.
Pull it up, and here's, here's a hard copy as well.
Yeah, some of them are green and-
So the ones that are highlighted in green mean that those are enhanced. It's basically not a one-for-one replacement. Um, that's, that's what those are. But everything in here for 26 on the CIP is funded in the 26 budget, yes. If we did not fund it in the 26 budget, we moved it to a future year on the actual CIP.
Okay, but everything in here-
And that was, that's actually noted in the comments, that we moved it to a different year for budgetary reasons.
So to give you some examples of some things that would be an enhanced item. So for example, just looking through here, um, continuing to complete the, the camera system. Out in the public, the police is doing, um, preliminary engineering on, on town center streetscape. Uh, things like that.
One more thing to note about the CIP. Everything in it, um, is not, some of the things that are in it are funded with revenues and some are funded with, are recommended to be funded with a fund balance appropriation. And so the document coming to you now shows you which ones, um, are fun, are proposed to be funded by a fund balance appropriation.
And so, to be specific, e- everything that's being funded by fund balance is a, a one-off activity?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, sir, because, um, I mean, that's, that's just good practice in general, because fund balance is essentially your savings account. Um, you know, so from a home standpoint, you wouldn't want to pay your normal everyday power bill and all that from your savings account, it would ultimately run out. Um, but y'all also did adopt a fund balance policy that fol- that specifies what, um, what it can and should be used for. And so, yes, sir, we are only using it for these one-time capital items.
So I know one of the top, hot topics is this $100,000 truck. So ex, can somebody explain to me how we're going to, uh, that's an investment, how are we gonna get that return in investment?
I think, I think what exactly we would use it for would be to do more projects. Um, right now, we just have that van- that we really can only use for smaller tool transportation. So we would use this truck to, uh, gosh, more asphalt repairs, more stormwater projects, hauling, more equipment. Um, we can't, we can only, we have one trailer or one vehicle that we can use to, to haul equipment at this point in time as well. Truly just expands our capabilities ac- across the board. And then another thing as well is just typical day-to-day projects, thinking of emergency situations as well. Large trees come down. Uh, right now, we just have one, one truck that can haul equipment. We have two, we'd be in two places at once if, if we need to. Um, so thinking of emergency situations as well, i- it expands our capabilities.
And I apologize, 100 grand's a lo- a lot of money, so I apologize for asking the questions. But, I mean, does that mean projects would get delayed if we didn't? Projects wouldn't be able to be implemented if they didn't?
Delayed, yes.
Yeah.
They would be, yep.
Yeah. And is there, I mean, I'm asking this question, but at the same time, there's a part of me that doesn't like this idea, but like, looking into like a, a used vehicle of the same class?
Uh, that, that's definitely an option. Uh, my fear with getting used vehicles, especially in these situations, similar to why we don't get used police vehicles, is just the wear and tear that these vehicles take.
My whole family's in construction, so when they sell a vehicle, it's usually, uh, on the verge of-
Of dying.
Of dying, yeah.
And then we wouldn't get a warranty to, presumably as well with that.
So let me first say that I drive a car that's 210,000 miles. Uh, my wife drives a car that's the same mileage. My goal is to get 300,000, 400,000 miles out of my car. You know, when it, the souls buy a car, it's like a hundred thousand dollars, or 100,000 miles, and it's brand new to us. I take a little bit of a different approach when it, when it comes to fleet manage, management, just for the exact reason that you mentioned, Steven. A- and that's because oftentimes, private individuals, a lot of people will drive a car, you know, maybe it's 60,000 miles, 80, whatever, they'll trade it and get a new one. So there's a lot of u- people turn in their cars before the useful life is over. Organizations, work trucks, uh, they're maintained a little bit differently in that they're used typically until the useful life is, is expired, right? Where the cost of repairs is going to exceed that. And so, uh, I, I don't think, I, I'm not opposed to like a used car, a used vehicle in, in theory. I just think anything that's out there in the market, um, it's gonna be limited. And there's a reason why somebody is going to be getting rid of a perfectly capable work truck.
Yeah. Um, you don't have to sell me, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm familiar with work trucks and how they're treated, so.
And one thing to note as well is that it's half being funded through stormwater funds and half being funded through, through general fund as well. And we received the quote, uh, month or two months ago, and it was, uh, I believe the quote was 80, 85, yeah.
Which that was actually, I think it was 85. And that was $10,000 less than the state contract price. So, you know, we, we did bring an ABO, um, because we thought, for all the reasons that Kevin and Alex have just mentioned, that, and knowing that it was quite a bit under state contract price, that we felt like that was a pretty good deal at the time. Um, don't know if it's still available at this point, you know, because that was-
Two-ish months ago, yeah.
Almost two months ago. Um, but you know, so we would do, Kevin and the staff would do their due diligence, trying to get the best rate that, that the town could get, for sure.
How many days a year will it be used? Will it spend more time in the parking lot than in use?
It would be our main, our main truck. It would be on, out in the field every day, unless it's raining.
Projects?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah. I think Alex has mentioned that he, being the good town manager that he is, not, um, trying to suck up or anything, but, um, he tries to say hi to everybody in the office every, every day, and he'll go-
I like that, that engineer.
And he, every time he tries to go over and say hi to the Public Works employees, they're, they're never in here. So they're, they're, they're truly out every single day.
Give you a dollar if you can go to the Public Works facility and find them actually there, they're always out working.
Uh, why couldn't we do 100% out of stormwater? Now, I, I agree, I know it's not gonna be working 100% in stormwater, but-
I, I think from the accounting standpoint, yeah.
That's from an accounting, financial standpoint, yes, sir. Because I mean, it's not solely used for stormwater projects, so.
So that's a, uh-
Kevin, is there an argument?
Restricted, restricted.
Is that justifiable? I mean, is it-
Is that a, a legal, uh, is it legally that, could we write it off in 100,000 on the stormwater?
I honestly don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I know what, normally what I would say is that you would do, you know, do it based on usage. We were just doing 50/50 for the ease of it. Um, quite honestly, if it was used 75% for general fund, in reality, it should be funded 75% from the general fund. But I would have to look and see, um-
Yeah, if you could do-
If there are any guidelines on that legally.
Yeah, if you could do that, because who, who would audit that, uh, would our auditor? How are they gonna just, justify?
I'll have to look into that, and I'll get back to you.
And we can, we can look back, and I, I'll talk with Mr. Parker. We can, uh, we can make sure that 50/50 split is, is the right one and make sure, um, that we're, it wasn't just, we'll split it 50/50. You know, maybe we could look at, maybe it, maybe there's more stormwater work. We just need to look at the data and figure that out.
Okay. Well, that was on my list too, so thank y'all.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anything?
I probably will, but I'll, I'll let y'all go ahead.
Well, my list is a little longer, but, uh, let me tee it up a little bit. Uh, first thing, when I look at these things, I look, can we, uh, live without it? Can we operate efficiently this year? And hopefully, uh, things will turn around next year. Uh, hopefully this council will approve Crestwind Development as a voluntary annexation, or to generate a million dollars. Uh, construction on that's gonna begin late in, uh, next calendar year. So can we operate efficiently without some of these things this year, since we're asking for a four cent, uh, tax increase? So the first one was, uh, you know, the board salaries, uh, I think we ought to keep them the same. Uh, when we're having a force, everything, everything I'm on-
We did.
Huh?
We did.
Oh, I thought we-
We pulled, they were, the data was entered and we read the data, but we pulled it for-
Okay.
This year.
That's a good one. The second thing is, uh, we implemented the salary study, oh.
I do, the, the board member salary pay implementation is in here, sorry for any confusion.
It is in the 26 budget, because we needed to be able to do numbers. What, what we heard, or at least what I heard, was that y'all did not want to make it effective when you made staff raises, you wanted to wait and have that conversation with the budget. But because we had to do a balanced proposed budget, we had to put numbers in there. And to be safe, we did put those numbers in.
Alright.
I think our intent was to not discuss it this budget year, but I might be wrong.
No, I think, I think she's right, that's what I remember, is that we weren't going to discuss it the current budget year, which is 25, and amended it for this year. We would wait and discuss it as part of 26, which is the budget we're talking about now.
Nice, so now, I'm asking this, we-
Maybe you're right.
We hold our current salaries at the current level, so, uh-
No, I'm not ready to s- I, I mean, my time's as valuable as anybody else's. And I feel like we're getting underpaid based off the study, so.
Alright, that's, that's all we know, your opinion.
I mean, that's my opinion, you know, I mean.
Well, what is this, all the studies?
Yes, sir, that's the information from the study.
Well, that's my, uh, that's my, on the board salaries, that's my recommendation. And we've heard from Steven and, and David, but, uh, I'll move on. So the salary study, so we implemented the salary study in the, in the staff-
For staff, yes, sir.
So my thought was, so, so what percentage was that, uh, as far as, uh, an aggregate?
Ask percentage, what percentage?
What percentage increase was that for the, as a total for the group? I mean, was it-
The percentage, or call it big-
2%?
Just under, uh, just under $100,000. Um, for the aggregate, um, we'd have to look at that, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, let's call it a penny. And so we're giving, uh, I mean, a 1%, so they give them the 2% pay step, the 2.9% CPI, and then a 1% holiday bonus, and then the officer incentive pay. So, you know, a total's up to about 6, 7% increase, which, uh, again, 4 cent tax increase, seemed like a lot. Uh, next one is, uh-
Okay, so let's, have we already implemented that, though?
It's in these numbers.
Well, but I mean-
I'm, I'm a little bit confused on what you were, were saying, Mayor, because everybody didn't get salary increases with the pay study.
That's why I was asking, what was that average percentage?
On, oh, on the pay study, I don't, Karen, do you know that? I'm sorry, I thought you were asking what the percentage was on, on y'all's stuff. I hadn't, didn't realize you had moved on, so my apologies.
That's alright.
Kinda looked back, I, I wanna say roughly about probably half, half of the staff got it, maybe half didn't.
So the ones that didn't get it are gonna get a 2, 4.9, 5, 5, 5.9% increase, plus the officers will get their, their incentive pay. So some of them, you know, gonna get-
That every, that's across the board, based on the-
So the ones that, I mean, that's a lot versus the private sector, that's all I, all I know. And so, uh, just, just throwing out the, that's, with a 4 cent tax increase, that's a lot.
I can't reme- the league did do a study, um, and it had estimates, I can't remember what it is right now, um, about what other municipalities and places were proposing. And if I'm remembering correctly, Karen, do you remember? But I want to say if I'm remembering correctly, we were right on target, if not actually slightly below what the average, um-
Alright, thank you. The next one was under outside services, which I, I figured out one of them, Wal- Walton and Hall, that's your company. I didn't know you was, you had a partner. You don't do much, so. But what is, what is Archive Social for 4.7?
Mayor, Archive Social is, we have to do it by statute, all of our social media is snapshotted, or they take snapshots of our social media in case there's public reference.
I have no idea what you said in there, so, uh-
State statute, it's, it's mandatory.
Mandatory, that's all I need to know, alright. And then what is Janice King for 13th?
Janice King, that's our custodial services.
Custodial, okay. What are ST, STWs, that stormwater fees? Uh, 10K, what is that?
So that's, um, the stormwater fee, the $67 per ERU. Um, the town pays that on our town-owned properties, and so that's-
Oh, the town-owned properties, okay.
Yes, sir, and so we have been paying that, we just hadn't actually been budgeting to pay it.
Right. Well, the next big one was, it's financial software. You know, Alex and, and Jesse have told us, you know, what's going on with our financial software right now, but it's a big, it's $100,000, you know, can we live?
That's just an estimate, though.
Yeah, okay.
So we, we don't, um, have an actual, I did speak- So we, we don't, um, have an actual, I did speak to one company, um, and that was based on their quote at the time, but I don't ultimately know what it'd be.
So my same question, can we live without what we got right now for a year and operate efficiently? So that's, you know, I'll leave that to Alex and Jesse to tell us, no, they can't, but then, that's, like I said, that's their reason to ask, and then-
So the software that we have now, do, do we lease it, or do we, is it a package that we had to buy?
We do not lease it.
Okay.
No, sir, we are just paying like a maintenance fee to maintain that software. Um, that software results in our work being extremely manual and labor-intensive. Um, to get you the historical data that you asked for, I probably spent close to a week just manually getting numbers into a spreadsheet to be able to do that. And then I manually had to assign all those, uh, all the GL accounts to categories to be able to do that for you, because our software does not do that. Um, uh, although, like with us working from home right now, we're having quite a bit, um, things are a little difficult, because our workflow process is all on paper. Everybody fills out a paper PO request, um, and all the approvals go through paper. So with us not being here and with our software not having those workflows already in them, working from home is, has been a little difficult, um, to get all those approvals that we need. Um, so it's just, um, we've had issues with the chart of accounts and duplication of numbers that I've had to, uh, work with our payroll provider to try to get some of that stuff squared away, because predecessors used the same number for multiple accounts. Um, so it's, our software capabilities are, um, less than, than desired at the moment.
Does the hundred grand, um, is that a annual?
That would not be an annual, no, sir.
It's the first year.
That would just be the first year implementation, and again, that's just an estimate.
So that's conversion of this data, so set to that?
Right.
New one?
There would be ongoing costs, but I don't even wanna guess as to what.
With a hundred for the first year, probably less going forward.
I would definitely say less, yes, sir, because we wouldn't have to do all that implementation. I mean, it's gonna be a lot to have to completely redo our chart of accounts, um, but that's what is absolutely needed.
And what, once that's done, and you have a, an efficient and effective system, will that be a lot less of a strain and stress on you and your ability to do what you need to do?
For sure, yes, sir, if we had the technological capabilities to do that.
All right. What it, oh, do they come out? When you say installed, does somebody come out and help you with that, or?
Usually the way it works is you would get a project manager. Um, they may not come on site, but, you know, you can do things together. And it also just depends on which company we, we go with as to how they do those types of things.
Have you picked one?
I have not, no, sir.
Picked any? Like in the pool of some to choose, or do, are you using NCLM to help?
Um, I was gonna speak with NCL, with the league, yes, sir, that's what I was gonna do. I know they had, um, they used some of their ARPA funds to do a grant, uh, for smaller municipalities, to help them implement software. Um, when I did speak with them, they told us, well, number one, the funds had already run out by that point, and number two, we were much larger than their, their base for that grant program. Um, but I would absolutely be interested in looking at the software that they chose. Actually, it was a software vendor that I had spoken to previously at a conference, um, before coming here, and at that point, they couldn't handle where I came from, they couldn't do somewhere that big, but coming here, I just immediately thought, okay, that would be a good one for us to look at. I haven't even started really going down this road, because, I mean, I, I have a hard time just keeping up with the, the day-to-day.
The next item is, uh, and I don't have the, the account number, non-capital equipment, uh, fifty.
That was your non-capital equipment, chief.
Fifty thousand, eight hundred.
Description on the line item said operational equipment includes equipment for new positions, ten thousand, four hundred each. Matter.
Senator, break, with the two new positions we had requested, uh, that was just initial outfitting. Body cameras, tasers, firearm leather, uniforms, uh, that's what that-
All right.
Ten thousand number is. But I'll stay up here, because I think I'm probably next on the list.
Yeah, you're next on the list, yeah. Well, you, you do get attaboy, you spent a lot, a lot less money on gas this year so far, I know.
We try.
Yeah, the, the price is going down, obviously.
That is true.
But, uh, it didn't go up the first half of the year. I mean, it was up, you know, first half of the year, so. Well, the har- hard question is, can we live with just two vehicles instead of three?
Um, we've been very diligent with our fleet and trying to keep it maintained. Um, but, and the, the number, that one-eighty number is four cars, Mayor, it's not three.
Oh, is that?
Um, yes, sir. Um, and just, I, I wanted to give you all just a little, uh, we all know what inflation's done, but since twenty-two, uh, the cost of vehicles and upfitting has gone up twenty-three percent just since twenty-twenty-two, and those are big numbers. Um, uh, but quite honestly, we're to the point where the council and the manager have always been great with us maintaining the fleet, but we're to a point where we need to keep those cars, uh, fresh.
Right.
You know, that's their office, so they're in those-
What, what's the mileage limit or level?
We don't have, we do it by years. Uh, so a patrol car is eight years, and administrative car, um, is ten years. So like, the detective's car, my car, Assistant Chief Perry's car. Uh, we look more at like, um, uh, we don't use mileage as much, we look at engine hours.
Keep track of that?
It's, the, the car does it for us, but, uh, yeah, we look at those things, because that, that's what has a big impact on vehicle maintenance.
Because you guys probably idle a lot.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, when they're on a call, they'll leave the car idle, but because for fuel increases, we, we've required people to shut their cars off when they're out at the station or out for a dinner break. Um, but, um, particularly the, oh, sorry.
No, no, how mu- how many hours does a vehicle have after eight years?
Oh, I don't even know. I have to, I have to, I'd have to check, to be honest with you. Um, I don't have that number.
I think somewhere they said, like, between twelve thousand and thirteen thousand hours. To give you some idea, my Tahoe has seventy thousand miles on it, and it's just clicked over two thousand, I mean, two thousand hours.
Say that again, Stephen.
Between twelve thousand and thirteen thousand hours on the engine. After eight years.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
Your car has seventy thousand miles in two thousand hours?
Yeah.
And the perfect example is the two thousand-seventeens are the ones getting ready to rotate out. Those have been our most expensive cars to get fixed. Uh, not going by model, but we've had turbos go out, catalytic converters have gone out, and that gets really expensive when, uh, a police car's got two catalytic converters on it, have to be replaced, and-
So the four cars you were buying, or replace four cars in the fleet?
Three cars will pro- will replace, and then the fourth car was for one of the new, the new, one of the new positions we requested, yes.
Three cars that are being replaced, do y'all sell those?
We do sell them on gov deals.
Right.
Um, which we have, uh, because we've, we've got such great maintenance records and the, and the fact they've been taken care of, we've gotten much better, uh, money on our resale, and with finance, we've got a, a, a line item, a revenue line, so that money that goes in for those vehicle sales offsets the cost of purchasing a new car. Now, it's not a lot, but when I first got here, we were trading the cars in and getting, you know, five or six hundred dollars.
Oh.
Some of them, I mean, we're, they're at the end of life, so we might sell them for seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars, but others, uh, we've gotten, uh, a few, or we've gotten good money on the resale on gov deals.
Well, my next, uh, line item was the uplift, and you've already explained that one, so, uh, uh, the twenty-three percent increase. So all, all I'll get you to think about is, can you live with, uh, three cars instead of four? So just-
Yes, sir.
Give us some thought. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, the next item I have is, uh, is paving, eight hundred thousand that we, uh, add to the power bill fund, uh, to increase our, uh, paving. I, I tell you, the only calls I get on bad streets are state-maintained roads. I, I was, I get almost zero calls on roads that are owned by Stalings. So, uh, if we're looking for someplace to cut some money, it's, uh, that eight hundred thousand, uh, might be the way to go, in my opinion. The second thing is the PCI evaluation's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, to me, we can push that out another year.
It's actually seventy thousand, a hundred and twenty is the total in that line item, but it's not all for PCI.
What was the other fifty then, you remember?
It was a truck, I believe.
Oh, the, the, splitting it with the truck?
Yeah, yeah, it might be the truck.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm trying to remember.
Uh, the preliminary streets game plan is-
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I was wrong.
Yeah, so, so that's something that can be pushed out, in my op- in my opinion, I mean, uh, well, yeah, 'cause we don't even know what the road's gonna look like. Uh, they're still, you know, clearing the way for the, and, and the, uh, Monroe Road repaving been pushed out?
Yes, sir, I, I think they're looking at, uh, I think I shared-
Yeah.
The email, the, the let date has moved from January, February of twenty-six into the summer of twenty-six.
Yeah, so, so to me, you know, we can wait on that PCI evaluation and the, uh, the study for downtown.
Can I ask, Kevin, does that PCI eval, um, every year or every couple of years?
So our, our policy states every three years, however, we, I don't think that's actually necessary. I think every five years would give us the information that we need to tell us.
Why don't we just make it five years and-
And this would be year five, because the last time we did it was FY twenty-one, and this would be the, the fifth year of that, so, but-
Well, we could make it six.
We could, yeah.
Six and then five.
Yeah, and, and the issue with that is, um, un- until you do this kind of comprehensive, take the time to actually look at everything, you just don't know-
Yeah.
If, if things are deteriorating differently in different areas, but, um, is a year gonna, are the roads gonna collapse on themselves in a year? No.
No, but I, I'd be more inclined to do that, drop the street, street escape another year and leave paving alone. I think we, I think we need to keep the upkeep on the roads that we know are common. And, and when I walk around the neighborhoods, I'm kind of amazed at potholes and cracking and whatnots. It's happening. It's not huge yet, but it will be, yeah.
All right, that's all I got on that, thank you. So the next, last one is Recreation Department units, thank you for being here, and always welcome back, and then the three things, and I've told y'all, they're on the CIP, I told y'all at the last meeting. I think we can wait, I know, uh, y'all gave us a, a, a reason for the splash pad re- redesign, uh, yeah, and I think we can live for another year without it, and the Blair Mill Master Plan, I, I think we can live with that. And the pickleball fencing, I definitely think we could, uh, you know, they got what they want, they got, uh, pickleball courts, and so now to spend another forty-eight thousand dollars to, I know, you know, what y'all said about being safety and the maintenance and the, uh, I, I just don't think, in, in a year where we're, uh, increasing taxes four cents, I just don't think this is the year for that. So those are the, those are the three areas of, uh, that I would consider reducing and wait a year on, so.
Yeah, and I can kind of walk y'all through the reason why they're on this budget, um, just to give you some more background for those. And you're right, Mayor, do I think I could live without the tennis and pickleball court fencing for another year? Probably, I hope so, you know, I hope I'm not coming to you guys for the emergency situation come December. But what, we really wanted to go ahead and put that on the budget, because we get a lot of complaints about shading out there on the courts right now, not being shaded, it's full sun. The clientele that pickleball plays is usually older, so the fencing right now is not adequate enough to attach really anything to it. You see some pickleball tennis courts has the nice canopy shades on the side. We definitely would not do that right now. Um, so we're just trying to be really proactive with that fencing. However, I don't really see any issue pushing it back, unless if something did happen, obviously, we need a fence on the court that is working, so we would come to you guys in emergency situation with that. So just a heads up, you'll definitely see that on the budget next year if we decide to push it. The splash pad redesign, do I think I could live without it? Yeah, do I think the public could live without it? I'm not sure. I think they would be coming for me if that thing breaks in the middle of the summer. We're getting really close to the end of life on those spheres. Dina, back in, you know, two thousand twelve, when this was part of the part-of-grant, they made the park, they did a really awesome job with giving us some replacement spheres. When those break, we are down, and Nick, keep me honest, so one more sphere, I think we had a handful, kids love to climb on them, they break them, they're not the safest. We've had the league come out to look at them, they don't encourage the splash pad being open without part-time or full-time staff here due to its design. So this would be the design and implementation cost. I will say, the hundred and ten thousand is very generous. Uh, in my unit's honest opinion, think we could probably do it in the ballpark of eighty, and that would be really extreme, but we just have no idea what that's gonna look like once they start removing the balls, us replacing it with an aesthetic that fits the park. But if we don't do this now, I, I'm really nervous we'll be in a situation of it getting turned off and me coming to you begging to do something that might need to happen. So that, that's kind of where I'm at with it, um, and happy to answer any questions if you have some, David.
Do I look like I have one?
Just a little. I saw something on your face.
Because right on the tip of my tongue, ready to come out, but I'm off of it.
All righty, well, that's, that's my-
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
I do have, I do have a quick question.
Splash pad redesign, and then you mentioned that we had to have somebody attending the, the splash pad. Will this redesign eliminate the need for a person to have to-
It wouldn't eliminate the need of someone to be there, but I definitely think it's gonna help the longevity of the pad, and someone with maybe not a higher skill level as Nick, Kyle, and myself, definitely maybe a part-timer, once we get that.
There is a little bit of offset salary in ties on that.
Correct, and yearly maintenance cost. I will say, we, we spend a good chunk of change just fixing the pad as is.
Didn't we just do a huge upfit, like, three years ago, maybe, four?
Um, there was a shade structure that was added while Ash was here, she also installed an underground tank. That's probably what you're referring to, with some filter baskets, that was awesome. And I will say, that still works. Right now, we're currently getting some plumbing work done to it, just to keep it going a little bit easier. If y'all would like to tour it, would have to show you that beast of a, a pump room, but yeah, it's pretty, we're, we're functioning. I wouldn't say at its best, but, but we're getting there, definitely getting there.
Who, who recommended the attendant, uh, position?
That was the league, uh, the attendant for the park.
For the splash pad?
Yep, so they recommended that we have a part-time, yes, staff here.
Yeah, so they recommended, it's not required.
Yes.
They provide our insurance, though?
Excuse me?
They provide the insurance?
Yes, yes, sir. It, it would be a liability if we were to keep it on and no one from staff was here, and then with the design currently, we're, we're at a high risk of something happening. Probably the best way to say that.
And this would not happen until, what, like, spring of next year?
We would hope to get through this summer, and then in the winter, when it's off, do the redesign, so we can open next summer for the public. Our goal is to not be, be closed.
Okay, I, I know the last time that we did an upgrade, like, it was supposed to be done, and then it didn't get done until, like, like, the last few days of summer, so I guess that would, that's where my question's stemming from, is that we would try to do it and have it done and tested and validated before next summer.
I wasn't the park director then. I am now. So fingers crossed. Um, but we would do our very best to start this project as soon as the season was over, to get the ball rolling, to ensure that it was open.
All right, that's all I had for you, for you. Uh, David, turn it over to you, that's all I had from my list.
I'm still mulling a lot and answering for asking as I go along, so.
Okay.
There'll be more. Thank you.
All right, Alex, uh, what do you need from us tonight, then? Alright, Alex, uh, what do you need from us tonight then?
You know, I, I think we're at the point, right, where um, we've created a budget, right? We submitted to you all and now it's really about um, making sure uh, we're getting you as our elected officials. Formed to where y'all feel like you are informed to make a decision. Um, you don't have to make that decision tonight. Um, you know, we've got several other um, uh. Meetings on the books, there's one, go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead, I was gonna say the same thing, listen.
So the next uh, meeting is on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Is next Monday and uh, that is gonna be uh, uh. Uh, an eventful evening, so at five o'clock, we're gonna have a, I believe it's a five o'clock. A thank you so much. Um, there's actually, is this a? Actually, this is the old one, if you go to. This is the new one, yeah, forgive me, I'm wrong. Uh, so if you look here on the nineteenth, so at five o'clock, we're gonna have uh, a uh, budget work session. Uh, is that right? I thought the, anyway, that night, well, there's a budget, there's a budget work session. At six fifteen, there is a all committees meeting and then uh, there's also a budget meeting. I thought the budget meeting was last, that's wrong, so.
But hitting the ribbon cutting on the nineteenth?
That's right, so at, at five o'clock, we're gonna have our all committees meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then uh, that'll last maybe an hour or so. I want to chat with y'all a little bit more about uh, what you'd like to see at that meeting. Uh, and then at six fifteen after, we're hoping we get everybody, including all the committee members to come. We'll do an awesome ribbon cutting, the new uh, the new parks playground. By the way, that, it's like ants on a popsicle every by, every time I walk by there, there, the kids are all over it, it's great. And then uh, at seven o'clock, we'll have a budget, another budget meeting. Um, hopefully have more folks there and uh, you know, what I might suggest is to start going down. Um, maybe the notable items list. Um, and uh, you know, we can continue any questions, but that might be an appropriate time. For y'all to start making decisions if you feel so com- so comfortable. Um, and do it that night and then on the uh, the twenty-seventh, that's an optional meeting. Uh, so that's, we're, what we're thinking, how does that sound, y'all?
Who can, Graham, can you be here on the nineteenth?
I'll do my best.
Okay, Stephen?
Hi.
You're here, David?
I think so, let me look.
Really, that last, the last meeting, the seven o'clock one is that budget meeting. Want to have you here for all of them, but if you can't, if you can't make uh, those other two, we understand. I know, I know, I get it with the kids.
And if you have questions on the, on the budget that you want, Alex and Jesse and his, everybody else to consider. I'd recommend, you know, send them an email, copy everybody, so these are your concerns and then we can speed this process up and not have to be making any changes.
I'll be here on the nineteenth.
Okay, thanks.
Can you tell? No, no, go ahead, we're, we're still talking about scheduling, I got another question about the budget.
I was just gonna, Ma- Mayor, can you be here on the nineteenth?
Oh yeah, I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, great, thanks, Karen.
I was just gonna ask you, obviously, where difference on the, the council? What, what is the salary changes there?
The sheet got passed out to y'all.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not see it, thank you.
We went with um, the salary study took all of these different municipalities. Um, and so all of their salaries for their respective mayor and council positions are in here. And our proposal for y'all was to go with that average amount. So, I mean, you'll see that compared to anywhere, y'all are.
I think what we used is, we took the same approach with the council and the salary study as we did with staff in that. When we compared not all, but certain salaries, uh, if you factored in like Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, it would kind of skew it. And in some ways, they're our competitors, in some ways they're not. But um, we looked at the, the folks that we thought, for lack of a better term, competitors. And uh, I believe Ms. Karen, that was what we did without Charlotte and Mecklenburg. Much higher than everybody else.
Okay, oh yeah, that's, that's good to know.
You didn't want to do some math.
You heard that?
Yeah.
So on the staff, I mean, the, the council, including the mayor, that'd be in uh, forty-nine thousand. Yeah, forty-nine thousand dollar increase in, in uh, payment. So, that, that, that's significant, I, I, I realize we're, a lot of work and we're underpaid. But to have that big a jump in one year would be uh.
Well, it's kind of more like ten or twelve years, isn't it?
Well, yeah, we haven't had an increase for a while, but.
Yeah.
Explain that to somebody when they're asking you how they got that big a raise in one year. So uh, so I don't mind supporting a, some type of raise, but not forty-nine thousand dollars worth in one year, so.
And I'm kind of, that's kind of where I'm, the reason why I'm asking the question. Not necessarily, I'm just thinking, maybe there's a.
Oh, it's fifty thousand two forty-nine, excuse me. Oh, council, think on that.
Okay.
I will tell y'all, when I first came on in two thousand five and, and it might have been Karen, were you here in two thousand five? And she gave me my ta- tax.
I've been here forever.
And she gave me my tax uh, withholding form and I, I said, what was this for? And I couldn't believe we got paid. So uh, you know, like Graham, he donates his money to uh, ain't that right?
No, I took a, I reduced my pay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with not raising it.
Think about it, let, let council know what, let Alex and Jesse know what you've, what your vote is on that. So, since I'm going off, I'll uh, won't comment anymore, but uh, as Dave said. I might stick around if I got eleven thousand eight seventy-seven, so. Better not tell my wife I'm turning down her pay raise, so she'll make me work another year.
Oh yeah, she's gotta pay for those trips.
Yeah, she's in, leaving for Norway tomorrow, but she's on social security, she'd get plenty of money, I believe. Spousal benefit, if y'all, if you're sixty, Kurt might know what spousal benefit is, but uh, y'all are not sixty-seven, so y'all will leave. Sixty-five. Alrighty, that's all I got, any other, any other questions?
Lots to digest, but no more questions.
Again, Alex, Jesse, Aaron, every staff, appreciate all y'all's work on this, Kurt, thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, and this is actually for the chief. So we have, did we have some people that cadets that were in the program to become officers? We have two. And are those the additional officers we're talking about?
Yes sir, that's, those are our, um, we got approval to overhire by one, so that makes our staffing twenty-six. We're at twenty-six, but those two VLET cadets are at twenty-five, twenty-six. That's our staffing number, that doesn't include uh, the two additional. Haven't anticipated. That'll take us back down to the allotted twenty-five, including the two VLET cadets. Two additional officers would be uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So, and I hate to ask, but we're getting by with? Is that a question or is that a statement? It's a, the question period is.
To be very candid, there are days and nights that there might only be, our minimum staffing by policy is one supervisor, one patrol. Um, there are many nights and days that we are at that minimum staffing due to uh, vacation requests, due to training. You know, those things that were basic functions, we need those officers to go to uh, Intox, standardized virtual brand testing, those sorts of radar. Uh, general instructor, those things that we need. Officers are capable of bringing those skills back and utilize for other officers. So there's a lot of times, you know, knock on wood, nothing bad happens, you'll be fine with two. Um, you'll be fine. Someone gets arrested and they have to go down to the magistrate's office or the sheriff's office. And they're.
Yeah, so.
Maybe they're on the arrest. So, that's where that, the staffing analysis that the manager and I focused on was to do the basically called ship. As you factor in vacation time, sick time, uh, training time, those sorts of things.
If the two officers are occupied. Calls into nine-one-one. Or what happens? I'm assuming the Union County Sheriff's Office then gets.
Oh, that could happen. Um, I mean, and there's thirty-six deputies assigned Indian Trail for twenty-four hour. Not very many for a community of thirty-six, almost forty thousand people. This is me supporting my officers, but if you're a resident of Stallings, there are no better feeling than a Stallings police officer showing up and you call nine-one-one. Versus a sheriff's deputy.
No, I agree, she accidentally called nine-one-one.
Twice.
She showed up very quickly. But no, I appreciate that, so.
Alright, any other questions, comments? About thirty minutes and people can eat. Motion to adjourn?
Tucker, I mean.
Good job, good job.
Mr. Shaw and Mr. Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, thank you all.